Good evening, folks. I'm Brian Saul, the Chair of the Howard Board of Appeals. And I want to welcome you to the meeting tonight. On this date, December 19th. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard in the Massachusetts zoning and neighboring Act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, secretary, and attorneys presenting a case to inform the Chair if our protocol is not being followed. During each case, while in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding the case are required, requested to fill out an information form on the podium. So basically, if you want it to be heard in an open session, just need to come up to the podium. And there should be, I believe, a list here just to write down your name and, I believe, either your address or your email address. So we know who you are. I'd like to have each Board Member identify themselves. Oh, wait, before I say that, one of our Board Members is on remotely tonight. That's Chris, who will be in a second. But I'd like to have all the members identify themselves. Actually, Chris, starting with you.
Chris Murphy.
David Nunoy.
Brian Sullivan.
Alexander Donahue.
John August.
Now, before we get to the cases, I just wanted to address a couple of things. And based upon, we have an agenda item later on this evening, on old business, which is a discussion regarding subsidized housing inventory. Now, as a result of that item on the agenda, I believe, and I was informed that there was quite a lot of scuttle on the Howard Facebook pages today regarding this item. And the concern was that this Board was going to be meeting tonight regarding a potential 40B project in town. Specifically Pine Oak Village. That is not the case. At our last meeting, one of our Board Members asked a question, which is, what the situation is in this community regarding the amount of subsidized housing? That was the question. So a report was made available to the Board, which is a simple two-page report that's called the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, Chapter 40B Subsidized Housing Inventory for the Town of Howard. And it just lists the 328 units of what's considered subsidized housing available in the Town of Howard. And because we're making it available to the Board Members and they had any questions regarding it, it was listed on the agenda. I will, so this discussion has nothing to do with potential 40B case for the Board. That would may, it may come before the Board at, we don't know when. And I'm going to discuss that again just real briefly. This report, if anyone has interest in it, will be included in the Board minutes of tonight's meeting, which will be made available in about 30 days after the Board basically approves the minutes at our January meeting. It is a simple report. Should there be a major concern on seeing it, you're welcome to, if you want, contact, you know, I suppose you can contact our building department. Somebody can send it out if it's approved to send out, but it will be on our minutes in about 30 days. Okay? Basically, and just because it, there was concerns that we were going to go forward tonight regarding hearings about, you know, this proposed project. I just wanted to just remind people that this process goes as follows. The state has yet to issue a P E L letter, which is a project eligibility letter regarding pine oaks. Nothing happens until the state issues this P E L letter, which is stating the fact that they've submitted the proper documents to the state and information, and the state is saying that they feel can go forward for review by the town. After a project eligibility letter is issued, an applicant has up to two years to file an application with the Howard Board of Appeals for a 40B application. And that's called a CPA. And so that's a comprehensive permit application. Once the Board receives that, then we have to post our first meeting regarding that project application within 30 days. So this Board is, I believe, a ways away before we're going to see any type of hearings regarding that particular case. And I assure you, when a CPA, a comprehensive permit application, is filed with this Board, ample notification will be going out to the community. And this Board, myself as Chair, I want to assure the public that we will make sure that any meetings are properly advertised. And we'll do our best to make sure we have facilities to, and set things up so everyone can properly come to a meeting and at the proper time at each hearing. And there'll be several hearings regarding that case. The last 40B was on a six-unit housing situation by Habitat on Murray Lane in Howard. And that had over 12 meetings before that simple project was decided upon. So this is not going to be a quick process when it happens. And I just want to assure folks tonight that the Board had no intentions of discussing that project tonight, only to hand out the summary of the subsidized housing that currently exists in town. Anybody want to make any comments on this?
No.
All right, well, that being said, so if you're here tonight for that report, discussion, there's not really going to be any discussion on it at all or that potential 40B project. Thank you. So, the also tonight, we have two parties that are on remote, which is one Board Member, Chris Murphy. And at a special request, one of our applicants for tonight's hearing on 423 Lake Street requested because of scheduling conflicts or whatever, if they could also call in remote, you know, for the hearing. And let everyone know that at any time when, if we have a communication problem or the remote goes down, this meeting will continue. It will not be delayed or postponed. Well, that being said, and I'd like to ask the caller first.
Case number 2024-33, Leo v. Coburn through his attorneys, William D. Crowell and Michael G. Donovan. They're the owners of the property located at 28 Spinnaker Lane, assesses map 16 parcel C4-5 in the RL zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or in the alternative a variance for 325, 54, A1, and 2. Alteration or extension of single two-family residence structure and 325 attachment 3 table 3 height bulk regulation to construct two additions, an addition, add an additional, excuse me, driveway to pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws of 325, 54, and 52 and Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 10 and 6. This case has been continued from November 21st of '24. The notice, the notifications that are relevant to this, the planning director submitted comments to the planning department had no concerns. The health department commented that the sitting room is considered a bedroom for five bedrooms in total. Basement rooms are not, shall not be used for sleeping, no egress. Should egress be added, window. The space will then meet the definition of a bedroom and further septic expansion shall be required. Two additional test holes and one additional perk must be completed for septic expansion. A licensed septic installer must apply for a disposal system. Construction permit prior to the building permit signing off. No other comments from the town departments or others were received.
Okay. I'd like to ask the Alvin representative to introduce themselves and any person assisting on your presentation.
Thank you, Attorney William Crowell from Howard Port. Good evening. This, and Mr. Coburn, the owner, had hoped to be here, but he informed me this morning he was not going to be able to make it. So I'm it. And this case was continued from November 21st. No presentation to the Board was made at that time. There was a change in plans where the addition was going to be located. So this is the first that you'll be hearing of this proposal. The property is located off of, on Spinnaker Lane, which is off of Julian Road in South Howard. You're going down towards Red River Beach. And as the clerk read, we're requesting a special permit to construct two additions and an additional driveway space on this lot. And the plan that you have should have the additions and the driveway in blue and the existing conditions in light brown. This is a non-conforming lot due to the lot size. So it's considered a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The site coverage is also a bit over the minimum, and that makes it non-conforming as well. So all other aspects of the existing house are conforming. And the additions will be conforming also. So just to run through some of the particulars, the frontage stays the same as 203.18 feet on Spinnaker Lane. The height of the dwelling stays the same at 29.8, 30 feet is the maximum. The side setback, and if you look at the north arrow just above where the house is shown on the plan, you'll see the north, as it was the last time I was here, north is going towards the southwest. All right? So when I say that the east side setback is, will remain unchanged, it's referring to the 29.6. Let's just say over to the left side of the house shown on the plan. That's east. When you look at that arrow just above it, so that there's no confusion, it's not a misprint, that's the east side. So that's staying the same at 29.6, there's no change there. And then there are some setbacks that are changing, but they're already conforming and they will remain conforming when we're done. So the front setback is currently at 46.6, 25-foot minimum. So it's coming closer, but it'll still be at 37.9. So it's conforming, front setback from Spinnaker Lane. The rear setback is currently 63.2. And with the proposed addition, it will be reduced to 46.2. But as you know, the rear setback minimum is 20, so it's certainly conforming. The west side setback, let's call it the, when you're looking at the plan, the right side is currently at 41. And the proposed addition is coming a little bit closer at 34.9, but it still meets the 20-foot side setback. The building coverage is conforming 15% minimum. We're under that at 8.77%, and that will remain conforming at 11.57. So we're conforming with everything except for site coverage, which is already non-conforming at 30.64%, and it's a 30% maximum. So we're just a skosh over. And the proposed additions and the extra driveway will increase it a little bit to 33.1. That differs from what Rachel has on her site summary, but I've double-checked it on the plan, and we're proposing 33.1.
That was from the last site plan that you had, so.
Your figure?
Yeah.
Yeah. And no problem. So this is the revised one. Just want to make sure we're on the same page. And why is it, why is it going up a little bit? Because the addition that's off the front of the house towards Spinnaker Lane, that's really adding another bay onto the garage. So it's making a two-car garage. So we need a little bit more driveway so we can get into that new bay. And we still need the same amount of turnaround radius and so forth. So we're asking for a special permit this evening to increase the non-conforming site coverage from 30.64 to 33.1. As you know, and by the way, we'll address the Board of Health. We already are showing a five-bedroom septic on the plan, and it may already be in the ground, but it's a five-bedroom septic. So no problem there, and we will satisfy the Board of Health. So the request tonight is for a special permit, and we contend that the two additions and the driveway increase will not constitute a substantial detriment. There will be no substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, traffic, or the like. It will not create any nuisance. And the additions will not be a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. So we ask that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, starting with John.
Billy, the only real question I have on this is, sort of to your point on the planning department, the other comments, is that the comments that we received previously were all dated before these revised drawings. So I don't know procedurally whether they need to have the opportunity to review them and provide new comments. I don't know that anything's changed substantially, but essentially, the entire addition was moved from the, I guess, the north corner to the south corner of the building. So, I mean, it's a pretty substantial change. So it's more of a procedural question, probably more to Rachel than.
Yeah, the other departments were notified that the case was continued and where that new site plans and building plans.
So they have received the new plans, or?
I told them they were available.
Because I really don't have any objections to the project, but it's just procedurally, we now have plans that are dated after the comments from all the departments.
If I may respond to that. It's a good question. Procedurally, as I understand it, and traditionally, it's been that once we submit the original application and the case is continued, the public and the departments are on notice that it got continued. And that there may be subsequent filings, and they may want to review that. Rachel's made them available. If they choose not to, that's up to them, but they're available. So they have adequate notice that we have the ability to make changes. We have the opportunity to make changes. And if they had any questions or problems or issues with them, then they could, the public or the departments could be here tonight to ask their questions, and I don't think that they are.
That was my only question.
I have no questions. What's your expected timeframe for construction?
Rick Roy Construction will be undertaking this. I would think that they would have everything, if not completed in full, they would have everything tied to the weather and so forth by the usual July or June 30th deadline. And they would be able to park all the vehicles off the street.
So you do feel effective that you'd be able to maintain vehicles off the street?
Yes.
The, because it's going to be a matter of, I mean, decision that are record. Your petition of reasoning that I had originally, have you updated this?
Yes.
Can I have an updated copy of it?
Sure.
So I can stamp that and be able to file it?
I believe Rachel has one.
I think it's in the package this week.
It should be in your package, but if you don't have it, I have another.
Okay, I want to just make sure that this is.
Yeah, I think it is, because it says with the revisions, 1118 and 1126 revisions are referenced in here.
Just the current reasoning?
Yeah, I had it in my packet.
Okay, I might have misplaced it, so.
That's not the current one.
Okay, so, and you have a current one? You ought to take my copy, Brian? Oh, excellent, excellent, thank you. I don't want you to think, Bill, that I don't treasure your submissions that you've misplaced the update.
Thank you, I never, it didn't cross my mind until you mentioned it. But I had extras of something else. Anyway, I'm not putting my hands on an extra right now, but he gave you the correct one, yes.
David? Oh, wait, I actually come back here. Even though it should be done regarding our statement for the decision and probably still like to probably indicate, you know, on the decision, the timeframe scenario, as well as keeping the construction vehicles on the site.
If I may, if we're not done by June 30th, then yes, we would abide by a usual restriction.
Yes, I just wanted to double-check that, okay. David, I'm sorry. No questions. Chris?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this case? There are none? Are there any additional questions from the Board? Okay, all right. So I just want to confirm, you know, again, for the decision here, what do we have? So submitted this application were the following items. Summary of reasoning by the agent from Crowell and Donovan Law, which just to make sure the updated copy. There was a notice for appeal, an application and petition for a public hearing. Existing proposed, existing proposed condition site plan by Grady Consulting dated October 11th, 2024, that was revised on October 18th and October 26th. And we also have.
November, November.
November.
I'm sorry, I'm stupid. November 18th and November 26th. I read it wrong, thank you, guys. And design plans of addition renovations by Rick Roy Consulting that was dated May 21st, 2024. I don't believe there's any other documents?
There are reading from that. It's Rick Roy and December 10, 2024, for his building plans. The end of that first paragraph of the summary.
So the design plans by Rick Roy Consulting. So you're saying that I have the date wrong?
Did the first date correct, it's Rick Roy Construction, May 21-22, and then December 10, 2024.
I think what's confusing, Brian, is the first couple pages are still dated May because those are the existing. And the proposed is a couple pages in, that are revised to December 10th.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for the correction. All right, findings of facts. The lot is located in RL zoning district. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming in lot size with 30,201 square feet. Frontage is conforming at 201.18 feet. Existing dwelling is conforming regarding all setback requirements. Existing building coverage is conforming, will remain conforming going from 8.77% to 11.57%, where 15% is allowed. The site coverage will remain non-conforming going from 30.64%, where 30% is maximum, and going to 33.1%.
Right, correct.
Building height is conforming at 29.8 and will not be changed. There'll be intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformity, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, or congestion. Discussion of the Board, applicant regarding above, if there's any other findings of facts or documents are needed? Okay, all right, okay. And I'll be recommending the conditions of approval regarding the, during life of the project, no demolition, exterior construction, or landscape between June 30th and Labor Day of any year. That life approved project, all construction is able to be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street or road. And approval of the Howard Board of Health is required prior to issuance of building permit. And also the violation of terms and conditions of special permit are enforced under 40A, Section 7, which we'll read in full later. Are there any other conditions that want to be offered up? So I'd like to have, Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the documents, findings of facts, and conditions of approval that stipulated. And then a second.
Second.
Questioned by David. Want to have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to indicate that Chris voted in the affirmative. So the vote is five and vote no is zero. I'd like to ask, the Chair asked for a motion to close the public hearing. So move, by John and.
Second.
Second by Al. Want to have a vote on closing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And confirm that Chris is in the affirmative as well. Going to assign members voting tonight. The Al Donahue, myself, Chris Murphy, John August, and David Nunoy. And Chair now entertain a motion to close discussion.
So vote.
Vote, yeah, motion by Al, second by David. Want to have a vote on closing the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote true, five, nothing. Confirm that Chris voted in affirmative. The Chair will now entertain discussion of the application by the Board. Any further discussion? Okay, all right. Al, I'd like to ask the clerk to make a motion.
Case number 2024-33, Leo v. Coburn through attorney William D. Crowell and Michael G. Donovan. The owners of the property is located at 28 Spinnaker Lane, assesses map 16 parcel C4-5 in the RL zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit and the alternative. The applicant seeks a special permit and the alternative variance. Let's see.
Oh, did I get these?
Yeah, we put the wrong one in there.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm just going to continue. Don't worry about it.
I apologize. Special permit.
From 32554A, 1 and 2, the alteration or extension of the single-family dwelling residential structure and attachment table 3, attachment 3, table 3, Balkan regulation. Okay. The granting is consistent with Dale, Dietrich, and related cases as they will be intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, or no new non-conformity, or new, no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted here on two is hereby denied. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions: During the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping between June 30th and Labor Day of any year. That for the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not in any public street or road. Approved by the Howard's only, Howard's Board of Health is required prior to the issuance of a building permit. A violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to general law Chapter 40A, Section 7, and Howard's zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Do you have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion? All right, go to vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Vote is five, in favor. And to confirm that Chris voted in the affirmative.
Thank you.
You have your approval.
Lot of work to increase the site coverage by less than 3%, wasn't it?
Yes. Imagine if you drop a flag.
Thank you very much. I have to run, so everybody have good holidays and see you next month.
You as well. Okay? Thank you. All right, for our next case, the applicant will be hearing remotely. And Al, if you would read first case, I mean, the next case, please. Just make sure that I didn't make that same mistake. It'll work our way through it. Okay.
All right, case number 2024-35, Singru and Jessica... Did you pronounce that last name for me? All right, Shrinivas. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. The owners of property located at 23 Lake Street, Assessors Map, 34 Parcell Z 1-57 in the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit from 32554A, 1, and A alteration or extension of a single family, of a single or two-family residential structure, 325, attachment to table 2, area regulation to build an attached deck on a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws, 202554, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6. The historic commission, water department, and police department submitted comments indicating no concerns conservation. Department submitted comments indicating applicant would need to apply for an RDA request for determination, as they are most likely within 100 feet of a wetland. No other comments from other town departments or abuders were received.
Well, the Chair asked applicant to introduce himself, and anyone assisting present your application.
Okay, I'm the contractor, the Singru. I'm the one to apply for this. So originally, I was just going to rebuild, replace the deck boards, but when I looked underneath, the deck is completely falling apart. All we're looking to redo is rebuild the deck exactly as it is. We're not changing anything. But it is non-conforming. When I went to apply for the permit, I noticed it was non-conforming because of the setback on, I believe the setback is 22.3. Let me, I have it. Yeah. Setback from the, it's 22.1. It's going to remain, 25 feet is required from the front. It's going to remain 22.1. We're not increasing, just rebuilding exactly as it is, just making sure it's not going to fall.
Okay. Is that, is your presentation completed?
Yeah, I mean, I believe so, because that's, we're not changing anything, so we're just rebuilding a deck in the front. The deck is existing. It's not...
Yes.
It's not, it's already there. It's not, so it's a rebuild, not a build, as I think you read.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Questions by the board? Chris, why don't you start and go?
I have no questions.
David?
I have no questions.
Okay. All right, John?
Hi, my only question is, I assume this deck's been there for quite some time? Has it been there for more than 10 years? Is that still now?
By the look, by the looks of the, you're asking me, or?
Yes.
Okay, by the looks of it, it's probably been there from when the house was built, because the frame is completely rotted, the solder tubes are falling apart. Yeah, so I think it's probably been over 30 years, for sure.
I'm in full agreement. I saw that deck, and it's at least 30 years old. I have no further questions.
What is your timeframe for the project?
Probably, well, it's going to be in the spring. So it'll be March, probably, beginning, either end of February, beginning of March.
And once you get started, how long will you be working on the project?
Oh, terribly quickly. It depends on, you know, one day, probably like two weeks, one a week, depending on the permit, however long you guys take to do the inspections, should be pretty quick, less than two weeks, for sure.
Now, have you been in contact with the conservation department?
I have not. I have to call them. The engineer who did the updated site plan said that he wasn't really 100% sure. He said it was like almost there, but because there's how, I think there's a, there's a house on the other side of the street, and there is also a street, so he said that they might not require anything special, or just protect it from debris. Should I contact them and find out what they, well, I'm going to have to contact them and find out what they want, right?
So the conservation department, just to, just want to confirm things, so you're not delaying your process. They indicated that you would need to apply for request for determination, as they expect the project is most likely within 100 feet of the wetland. So this is a simple process, or it should be, and I would recommend that you can contact them at any time, starting tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Because based upon, because of that comment from the conservation department, the building department will not issue you a building permit until conservation has given a green light.
Okay.
So don't get delayed. Things will go fine, you know, they're a good group. Just give them a call and find out what they will require from, you know, from you, so that they'll get your approval to go forward. And again, that's a determination permit that they give, and with that, then the building commissioner, it will be authorized to issue a building permit.
Sounds good. I will contact them tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right, so is there anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding this case? Hearing none? It, I'd like now to go over, oh, any additional questions at all from the board?
No.
No, Bruce, so you can begin with. So just to, for the preliminary purpose, just to go over the information that the board has received. We have a notice of appeal, application, petition for a public hearing. There was a brief narrative summary of reasoning that was prepared and submitted. Existing and proposed conditions plot plan by Moore and Engineering dated October 15th, 2024. I also, we are also receipt of a deck planning report, including a design, structure, and material list dated September 10th, 2024, and a construction contract dated August 12th, 2024, from ASA Construction Group. And then also, the standard building permit denial letter, and those issued by the building commissioner dated October 8th, 2024. I don't believe there's any other documents that we're receipt of. Did I correct everyone?
Right.
Findings of facts of the case. The lot is in the RM zone. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming regarding air requirements with 7,556 square feet, and frontage is non-conforming at 72.92 feet. The existing dwelling is conforming regarding its rear setback at 24.5 feet, but is pre-existing non-conforming regarding its setbacks on the northwest and south sides, which the proposed conditions will not change. The existing building and site coverages are conforming and will remain so. The proposed project consists of rebuilding the deck on the front of the house, and the same footprint, setbacks, and coverage will remain unchanged. The deck rebuilding will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. I believe I've covered everything. Any board members, any comments on that?
No.
Conditions of approval, I, guys, I don't, board members, excuse me. I don't believe we need to put the date and this location and so forth. I don't believe the date requirement.
That would increase.
Okay.
Pretty small project.
Yeah, pretty small project. And I believe the contractor, would you be able to keep, maintain the vehicles on the property, or would you be parking on a street?
You mooted?
Yeah.
Apologize. Yeah, no, there's, there's parking on the property. We don't, in the driveway, we don't need to park on the street.
All right. So we'll leave that one in, okay? And also, the special permit is subject to the approval of the conservation department, and the standard, also the violation of terms and conditions of special permit, need to be under Chapter 48. And I'll read the whole thing. Any further discussion by the board on this? I don't think we have, so we're going to just use those three. All you know which one to take out, correct?
Yeah, the first one.
Cross that out. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to accept the documents, finding the facts, and the conditions of approval that were stipulated. So seconded by David. I'd like to have a vote on this, gentlemen?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I indicate that Chris indicated the affirmative. The vote is five, ten, nothing. No votes, zero. And Chair now asks for a motion to close the public hearing. So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we'll give, we'll give Chris a little second. Second by Chris, motion by John. And voting for closing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closing confirmed, five, nothing. Okay. Chair now assigned voting. Al, myself, Dave Monnelly, Chris Murphy, and John August. Chair now will make a motion to further discussion. So move. Al, motion filed, second. Second by David. And the vote on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair wants to stamp this as a second. Let's go through all this. Rules of, rules of order. Chair now will entertain discussion of the application. Will you further discussion?
No.
So, Chair, I'd like to ask the clerk to read the motion.
Case number 2024-35, Singru and Jessica Shrinivas, through their builder, Andre Temerello, Temerero, I think I mispronounced it again, 14 Melbourne Road, Yanis. The owner of property located at 23 Lake Street, Assessors Map, 34 Parcell Z-57 in the RM zoning district, applicant is seeking a special, granted a special permit. Rebuild an attached deck, pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw 32554, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6. Granting is consistent with the Dale, Dietrich, and related cases as they will be an intensification of one or more existing non-conforming, no new non-conforming, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted here on two is hereby denied, and all work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions: During the life of the approved project, no construction vehicles will be parked on any, applicants will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street or road. A violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to general law, Chapter 48, Section 7, and the Howard's zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time. And...
I didn't even put it in.
The special permit is subject to the approval of the conservation department.
Okay.
It's an asterisk.
Okay, do we have a second on this motion?
Second.
Any further discussion by the board?
Can we just confirm the parcel number on that?
C157.
C, C1-57?
Yes.
Or Z? Because the application, it says C1.
Well, we should get this right.
It's Z.
Z.
Zebra.
So it's Z.
Yeah, I have it. We read it as Z1.
Okay. Yeah, because it's C, it's C1-57.
On the application. That's incorrect.
Okay.
No other comments?
Thanks, good catch.
That's going down.
If anything, we're good at details. Go for the discussion. I'd like to vote of the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I indicate that Chris voted the affirmative. And congratulations, you have your special permit.
Thank you. Guys, happy holidays and happy new year.
You as well.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
All right, case number 2024-36. William and Tiffany Crocker, through their attorney, Michael G. Donovan Esquire and William D. Crowe Esquire. The owners of the property located nine Cottage Ave, SS map, five parcel G-2-2 in the RM zoning district. Applicants seek the special permit or an alternative, a variance, 32554 non-conforming structures and uses, 325 attachment to table two, area regulation 325, attachment three, table three, heightened bulk regulations to renovate, remodel, and reconstruct the second floor of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, and replace the existing raised deck with a patio pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws of 32554 and 52 and the Mass General Law, 48, Sections 10 and 6. The conservation department submitted comments regarding Cottage Street was within the AE floodplain. The applicant may need to apply for an AR approval required or an RDA request for a determination permit. The water department, historic commission, and police department submitted no comments indicating any concerns. No other comments from the town departments. All the abutals was received.
Thank you, Al. Chair, I'd like to ask the applicant or representative to introduce themselves and those who are assisting you in their presentation.
Hi, Michael Donovan and seated behind me are Bill and Tiffany Crocker, the owners of the house. They just bought it this year. They've lived in the neighborhood in Hayawatha for several years, for, I think, close to 10 years, right? Yeah. But just bought this house this year. And seated next to me is Joe Fornier, who's the architect on the project. So as we laid out kind of in our papers, what we've got here is existing house. We're doing renovations on the house itself, but in the same footprint, so the footprint's not changing on the house at all. What's happening is there's going to be internal renovations in the basement, in the first floor. It doesn't affect the outline of it at all. And then there's going to be a demolition and a rebuild of the second floor, but again, on the same footprint. And that component of it is in large part why we're here, because it's going to both increase the habitable floor space on the second floor, and it's going to raise the roof. And for those reasons, you know, we need to be here and to get the special permit. In addition to that, the, as it laid out there, there's a wooden deck right now on the property, and they're going to replace that with a raised patio and a lower patio. And then there's some steps and some walkway area on the right that they're going to put in as well. And those, those portions of it just add a little bit to the site coverage that's out on the property as well. So right now, it's non-conforming, the, the front, or let's start with the, I guess, the lot size and the frontage are both non-conforming, but they're going to be unchanged. Then when we move to setbacks, we have two that are non-conforming and two that are conforming. So the conforming ones are the south side setback at 23.8, and the rear is at 20.2. And both of those are going to remain unchanged, so they'll stay conforming. In the front, it's non-conforming at 17.9, but again, that's going to remain unchanged. And the north side setback is 12.1, and that likewise is unchanged. So as far as the building itself, all the setbacks are remaining unchanged in the project. What does change a little bit is the patio setbacks, but those are all under four feet, and so you get up to half the setback if it's under four feet. So we've got 12.2 from the, the rear, I mean, I'm sorry, from the east line, and then 15.4 from the south. Look, I think I mixed those, it's not the south. It's, the rear is the 12.
Is the east.
And then the east is the 15.4. And so those, those are all conforming. So the only other non-conforming issue we have is the site coverage. The site coverage is currently at 56% with a 35% max zone, and it's going to go up 2.1% to 58.1%. The building itself is conforming at 25.8 on a 30% zone, and that's going to remain unchanged. And the height is going to increase, as I indicated, from 23 to 29.8, but that's both conforming, existing and proposed. So the, the department's weighed in, water historic, police had no concerns, conservation says they may need to apply for either an administrative review or a request for determination. Joe has already spoken with Amy on the project, and he's aware of that, and so they'll, they'll be talking to conservation about those comments and what they need to do there. And other than that, that's, that's straightforward. We would submit that, that it's entitled to a special permit if it can show it's not substantially more detrimental to the entire neighborhood than the existing non-conformities. We think that test can be met because it does not create negative impacts to traffic, noise, odor, congestion. The bedrooms are staying the same. It's just adding some height to the existing footprint, and it's replacing a wooden deck with a raised patio and some steps to the, to the right side of the house to get to that patio. You've probably been to the site, it's, there's a lot of grading that's going on there. So right now, there's no way to really kind of walk up on the right side of the house where that kind of steep incline is. So they're putting some, a couple of steps there and some walk pathway up to it. And so we would submit that special permit is appropriate here. That's all we have.
And we'll go into the project. I just want you to know, I'm, I am at this time now in favor of it. Just want to make a couple of comments, ask you some questions, so I want to, I want to, before I particularly make the owners squirm in the back, I want you to know that, that I, at the moment, I have a positive feeling about the project.
Okay.
So when I first looked at the plans and I went on site, and of course, the property is, is elevated.
Yeah.
All right? And I was looking at the left-hand side where the driveway is and just picturing that wall of about six feet higher. And to me, it was kind of overwhelming, the fact that that is going to go up an additional six feet.
Mm-hmm.
All right? It's, the, and then, and I considered that initially, my first look at it, in a way a detriment. You know, and whether or not it was a detriment to the entire neighborhood or not, I thought that the person next door, now looking at that much higher wall, that they might consider that a detriment. All right? So it's funny, I started looking up, and I can't come up with what people, what you actually, how you define a substantial detriment to the entire community. You know, and, or is it simply subjective? And substantial detriment can't be defined, but as a Supreme Court justice once said, "I'll know it when I see it." So I...
In a different context. Definitely.
It wasn't, I didn't, that was not my statement. So can you, you know, Bill always helps me out here on these things.
Yeah.
It's your turn.
Well...
How do you, how does one, how does our board, when we do, it's on, look at projects, when, when is, what is the definition of a substantial detriment, and can it be defined other than subjectively when I see it?
I mean, there is some component of that, but I think the phrases go together, though. It's substantial detriment and it's entire neighborhood.
I understand.
And so I guess, at the beginning, I would say that what you're describing now is one house next door as opposed to the entire neighborhood.
Well, actually, driving down the street, they're all looking up, but all of a sudden, this big wall, you know, going in the neighborhood. I just, just pointing that out.
Yeah.
For us, that, whoa, you know, is this, is this, you know, is this a bridge too far?
Well, but, but I think you also see the land kind of goes up, so the house that's towards the water from them is, is at that height. So I would submit when you talk about is a substantial detriment, that height of the house next door gets to go 30 feet from the grade as well, and, and so that it would be there.
That was my final conclusion to the whole thing. I just want you to know that, and I thought it through, and every neighborhood always sometimes has a house that's on a hill, all right, so it's up there anyways.
Yep.
But because of the slope of your, your land, the basement is actually almost a
walk-in. Almost a walk-out.
It's a walk-in. I think, I, there are many steps going into the basement.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there are. Yeah, in the back, there's several steps to get up to the grade. I think the grade in the back may even be higher than over on the side. I mean, you've seen it, the grade is all over the place on that lot. So where the steps are, there's actually quite a few steps out that back.
There are.
To get to the backyard from the basement.
It's about a half-story.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyways, I had that thought as to what it means, and so it is more subjective than anything as far as substantial detriment, but again, for the entire neighborhood. But there's, there's no real definition of it.
Of it, yeah.
The, regarding the site coverage, you know, where you're adding on additional dryway with, with seashells, particularly on the additional, adding area, as you know, I've been proponent of the fact that, that I'm less concerned on site coverage increasing when it particularly involves areas that have a previous material.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, that's, that's fine with me. Okay. Time frame of the project?
They, they would like to start as soon as they get, you know, if they can get approval. So they're starting in January, but it's going to take them, obviously, a while for this sort of project, but they're, they've told me that they, they're fine getting it weather tight, no outside construction, you don't come June 30th, if that's where we're going.
Your neighborhood and so forth, I will be recommending to the board that we include the, the date requirement.
And they're, they're, they're fine with that, yes.
And again, in that neighborhood, construction vehicles, I mean, I think you'd be parked on the street for a while there, too. I mean, I don't, what's your take on that?
They, they think for the most part that they're, they're going to be okay because they don't live there full-time, so the project, you know, January through June, you know, end of, end of May, let's say, their cars aren't there, they can be able to park everything there. And they've talked to some neighbors that said that they're not there either, so they could park vehicles in their yard as well. I don't know come July, August, you know, where the situation is then. They, they have that garage in the back, they could open it up and park their cars in there, so I think they have a fair amount of parking there that they can submit it in there if the board feels that they don't want any parking on that street.
There are four there now.
Yeah, I'd, in some regards, I don't think, particularly after June, parking in the street can be helped.
Mm-hmm.
I could be wrong about that. And so when we get into discussion regarding conditions, that's almost like suggesting maybe we don't even include that condition because it's, it's going to be hard to maintain.
It's a dead end.
Yeah.
It's not a through street.
Not.
I think it's as big an issue.
Right.
So I just, on that street is...
The only issue is, as long as there's enough room for fire apparatus to get through.
Yeah. It's only one more.
Yeah, that's a pretty narrow street.
Yeah, but I don't, like, like down on the campgrounds, I don't know how they're going to maintain this project and be able to not avoid occasionally parking in the street. And if I remake it a condition, I'm sure the whole neighborhood gets along fine, but I hate to set things up the fact that this is a problem. So, I mean, the board can vote on this, but my recommendation would not be to include that condition.
Okay.
I think even with emergency vehicles, there's only one more house further.
Yeah.
You're not talking about blocking 100 houses.
No. And just to, and I'm sure all the board's aware of this, there's two retaining walls that are on the, on the project, I think one in the front, one in the rear. They're both under four feet, so there's no requirement, you know, for setback, those retaining walls. Okay? If it was four feet or above, they wouldn't, but these retaining walls are, you know, one is, I think around 30, 30, 30 inches, and the other one's...
44.
44.
Yeah.
So you need to maintain, make sure it's under 44.
Yeah.
Otherwise, there'll be a term of discussion on that.
Mm-hmm.
I think that same comment applies to the patio. I know you mentioned that it's, you know, but I don't think it has to, you could do the patio right up to the property line without...
Correct, yeah.
It's not, it's a lot coverage issue, but it's not a setback issue.
All right, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Can I ask you, Al?
I'm going to answer, and I have no questions.
Okay. John?
No question.
Okay. Chris, do you have any questions?
I have no question.
Actually, I should have. I have one curiosity question. You talk about the insulations on the property there and everything, and you know, me, I'm always a stickler on the building height and the, the elevation. Is that natural, or was the original construction, that site was beefed up?
It's hard to determine at this point because there have been previous renovations to the property. And historically, we looked at when they elevated, they, one of the approvals that they had previously was to elevate the house.
Right.
So it's hard to say where the grade was relative to that. I suspect to, to the chair's point, you know, part of getting some natural light into that basement, perhaps they did elevate that, and that was the purpose for that. But it's hard to...
At the average elevation with now the height of the house, you know, the...
Do I get it, please?
The average elevation, it's 30 feet from the average elevation of the entire lot, not just the, you know, foundation.
We, we had our engineer determine that.
Yeah, so I noticed that the actual building height is, I think, like, what, 26'9" or something, so that you're, you know, you get in there, but it's, it's just, it does seem like it's an artificial hill.
We've had that conversation with the builder, and they're going to shoot it before they set all the rafters, they're going to shoot it just to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's, it's going to be pretty...
The roof pitch can alter.
Yeah.
It won't, it won't compromise the design.
I think that's well advised.
Yeah.
Again, I'm not, not against the project, it was a curiosity question.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this case? Hearing none? Any additional questions from the board or the applicant or comments? So I just want to go over the, for us, the information submitted as part of this application, incorporated in the decision. Notice of appeal... Notice of appeal, application of public hearing. Summary reasoning by Corl and Donovan Law, agent, dated October 11th, 2024. Existing building location plan by Weller and Associates, revised 11/11/24. Proposed building location plan by Weller and Associates, dated October, I mean, November 11th, '24. Notice of amendment from JFF Design regarding the existing, existing versus the proposed renovation areas. Existing conditions plan by JFF Design dated April 3rd, 2024. Proposed additions renovation plan by JFF Design dated November 13th, 2024. And the building permit denial letter from the Howard Building Commissioner that was dated November 8th, 2024. Am I missing any documents? Okay. So, findings and facts. The lot is a corner, well... The lot is located in the RH1 zone. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming regarding air requirements with 6,293,05 square feet, and the frontage is non-conforming at 80 feet. The existing structure is pre-existing conforming regarding the south setback at 23.8 feet, but is non-conforming on the north, east, and west setbacks, and all setbacks will remain unchanged.
If I may-
Sure.
The east is, is conforming at 20.2.
Correct. Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
So, why we do this? All setbacks remain unchanged.
Correct.
Existing building coverage is conforming, remain unchanged at 25.8%, where 30% is allowed. The site coverage remain non-conforming, going from 56% to 58.1%. The building height remain conforming, going from 23 feet to 29 feet point eight, 29.8 feet, where 30 is required. Proposed project will consist of interior renovations to include reconstructing the second floor of the dwelling and removing the existing deck on the rear of the house and replacing with a raised patio that will extend around the south side of the dwelling with a height of 20 inches above grid. Reconstruction of the second floor will not, will not be changing the footprint of the structure or encroaching on any further in the setback, but it will be adding habitable space within the setback. That was not an important announcement, I just want you to know that, all right? It will be an intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformity, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any other finding or facts that need to be considered in the decision?
No.
All right, all agreement? Okay. Conditions approval that I would like to consider here. Where, during life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscape between June 30th and Labor Day of any year. The special permit is subject to the approval of a conservation department. And what we are not going to do is eliminate the parking requirement, but please do your best to stay off the road. Okay, so that, I mean, we'll be disappointed if there's parking on the road and there's space available in the, in the driveway. Okay? A violation of terms and conditions of special permit may be enforced under Chapter 48, Section 7. The, any additional conditions, gentlemen?
No.
Okay. I'd like to now make a motion to accept the documents, finding the facts, and conditions of approval as stipulated.
Second.
Second by David. Might have a vote on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right? Indicate that Chris voted affirmative. So, that's unanimous. And I'd like to now ask for a motion to close public hearing. Move. Motion by David.
Second.
Second by Chris. Voting or closing, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five to nothing. Apologize, folks, and silence his phone. I'm going to assign members of voting. The Al Donahue, myself, my consultant, Dave Nutley, Chris Murphy, and John Artest. The chairman now entertain a motion to close discussion.
So, move.
Motion by David.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor to close discussion?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Show those votes, five, all unanimous, five to nothing. And now, we will, any further discussion by the board?
No.
Okay. I'd like to ask the clerk to make a motion in this case.
Case number 2024-36. William and Tiffany Crooker, through the attorney Michael G. Donovan Esquire, the owners of property located 9 Cottage Ave., SS map 16, parcel G2-2 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit to the non-conforming structures, uses, Attachment Table 2, Area Regulation, and 325 Attachment 3, Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulations. To renovate, remodel, and reconstruct the second floor of pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, replace existing raised decking with patio pursuant to the Howard Zoning Bylaws 325-54 and 52 in Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6. The guarantee, the granting is consistent with the Gale and Dietrich related cases, as there will be an intensification of one or more existing non-conformity, no new non-conformities, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on the pre-existing non-conforming lot, and as proposed, structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odors, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereon to is hereby denied, and all work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, all, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or landscape between June 30th and Labor Day of any year. Skip this one. The special permit is subject to the approval of the Conservation Department. A violation of terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard Zoning Bylaws pursuant to Mass. General Law 40A, Section 7, and Howard Zoning Bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any further discussion by the board? Hearing none. Offer, of course, for a vote in this motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Indicate the fact that Chris voted in the affirmative. And congratulations, you have your first.
Very much.
Thank you. Just one point, I think, I think I heard map 16, I think it's six. Rachel, am I right? Six?
Six.
It's six.
Yes, it's six.
Okay. I just want to make sure it gets entered as six, yeah. But if it's on the board, it's six, it should be fine, yeah. Okay.
All right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everyone, have a great New Year.
Well, thank you.
I think the motion moved, map six was indicated. I didn't see it.
No, it's map six, it's in, okay, we got it right.
Maybe I mispronounced it.
I'm not sure.
Which I don't think I did, but I guess.
I'll be honest.
Think I mispronounced it?
I was checking, I didn't catch it. I was checking, I didn't catch it.
I didn't catch it.
We only do one deck a night, right?
As long as you pass it.
We're not going to watch you on the beat, you can-
All right. Case number 2024-37. Charles and Jane Shaw, through Chuck Hart, 111 Airport Road, Hyannis. The owners of property located 88 Neil Road, SS map 16, parcel A1-3 in the RL zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit from 325-54A and 1N2, alteration or extension of a single or two-family residential structure. Table 325 Attachment 2, Table 2, Area Regulation, and 325 Attachment 3, Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulation, to reconstruct, attach to deck, and rinse, rinse station on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard Zoning Bylaws 325-54 and Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. The Conservation Department submitted comments indicating the applicant would need to apply for permit for work within the AE floodplain. The Water Department Historic Commission and the Police Department submitted comments indicating no concerns, and no other concern, no other comments from other town departments. All the bodies were received.
I'd like to have the applicant or those representing you to introduce themselves and anybody assisting in the presentation.
Chuck Hart, Lewis &amp; Weldon. Matt Young, employee at Lewis &amp; Weldon.
John, go ahead.
Pretty straightforward. Deck that was forwarding John's question from earlier, it was probably a, I would bet this deck was probably every bit of 30-plus years old. It was, it, the deck was in complete disrepair, as well as it had been installed with no flashing to the building. We actually had to replace about four feet worth of structure around the building where it was touched, so it was, it was a pretty, pretty big nightmare. So, as we ultimately went to replace it, for our permit, and were told that we had to come sit in front of you guys and, and give all the fun stuff, why? We had the plot plan done. Pre-existing non-conforming lot is, we noted earlier. The existing deck is noted at 10 feet off the back of the building. The only difference we're asking to do different is not encroaching upon that 10, but the existing deck that was there had clipped corners, and we're just simply asking to square the deck off versus, with the clip corner not changing that encroachment on the back of the structure. Pretty straightforward, I think that-
Excuse me. Chris, do you have any questions?
The fact that the deck isn't there means it's no longer pre-existing, right?
Technically, yes.
Technically, it's been abandoned. Right, that's, but how long ago did you take the deck down?
A month and a half ago, two months ago.
Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know what the timeframe is on that.
I mean, the, the rear, the, the house itself is non-conforming, even without the deck, so a special permit, it's not, it's pre-existing non-conforming anyhow. So, you probably say a special permit to put a deck up, but normally, if things are not there, they're, they're not pre-existing any longer.
Well, actually, I, I believe that it's not considered abandoned if it's, if it's been less than two years. So, if it's, if it's under two years, we can still consider that it was pre-existing non-conforming. After two years, it's considered abandoned, and then it's, it's-
Interesting.
You don't get the benefit of it being pre-existing after two years.
Good to know for the future.
Well, at least on this board, we're, we're on the chart.
Chat up may be a whole different story.
Rachel, the zoning enforcement officer, just, you know, confirmed that with me, but there is, there is that period of time.
Perfect, thank you.
You know, a lot of things could have happened, you know, all of a sudden it fell down, you had to remove all the debris.
Well, yeah, it was, it, it was literally-
Fire, I mean, there's a lot of reasons for things not being there anymore.
True, true.
I have no further questions.
Okay. David?
I have no questions.
What's, what's the height of deck?
One step up, it's a foot, eight inch, yeah, 12.
Okay, so clearly, clearly it's under four feet.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
All right. Time frame for construction?
Yeah, we're turning the house over in March to the client, so yes.
Okay, so you're planning on doing it by, by March?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're, you know, with the process, it's unlikely you're going to get the permit before the beginning of February.
Just, did I hear that I've got to go through Conservation, too?
Yes.
Well, yeah, Conservation, and then-
Floodplain.
We have, the decision has to be filed, and there's a 21-day waiting period, and then you have to go file it, so, and the holidays.
Easy enough. Yeah, well, we're finishing the renovation on the inside of the house as well, so it, it'll be March, April, when we're finishing that, so.
So, by, by May, you're going to be done?
Yes, sir.
But I would, I would contact Conservation at your earliest convenience-
Yeah, I'll do that tomorrow.
-get things squared away, you know. I don't see where there's going to be any issues, but they do want to check off the boxes and make sure that-
Easy enough.
Whatever needs, need to be done, protection, potential floodplain, so forth, is accomplished. Now, any questions?
No, the clip corner shouldn't be a problem, as long as you make it nice and round.
The particular eclipse that you'd like there, or is that?
No other questions.
John?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, just want to go over the, for the decision, the information submitted as part of this application. It will be incorporated decision are as follows. We have a brief summary of reasoning of the agent Lewis &amp; Weldon dated October, excuse me, it seemed like 11th in October, November 13th, 2024. Notice of appeal and application petition for public hearing. Plot plan for the proposed deck appeared by Paul Cape Septic and Truvey dated 8/26/24. Proposed deck design and construction plan, which is four pages, that was undated. And I did not see on the plans an author of those plans.
It was Lewis &amp; Weldon, it was done in Houser.
It was done by Lewis &amp; Weldon. I'm going to change that and make sure it's in there. And building permit denied letter by the building commission, it was dated October tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Are there any additional applicant, I mean, additional documents that I missed? I believe so, but my thank you. The finding of fact presented in this case are as follows. Lot okay in RL and AE zoning district, AE with floodplain. The lot is pre-existing non-conforming lot, size with ten thousand square feet, frontage is non-conforming at a hundred feet. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, got in the north and west setbacks. The north side setback is eleven point five feet, and the west setback is ten feet from the real lot line. The existing building coverage is conforming at nineteen point three percent and will remain unchanged. Side coverage is conforming at thirty-one point seven percent, where thirty-five percent is allowed, and will suddenly increase to thirty-two point two percent. The building height is not applicable. Proposed dip project will reconstruct the existing deck with two additions, square off the deck, addition to square off the deck. I should probably say previously existing deck, previous deck. Will reconstruct the previous deck. Proposed project will reconstruct the previous deck with two additions to square off the deck. The additions will be an extension of the setback non-conformity, but will not increase it. There will be an intensification of one or more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformity and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any discussion by the board or applicant regarding the finding of facts? So, on conditions, gentlemen, and, oh, board members, I think we, we'll do the date scenario on the June thirtieth, later day, okay, so it will be done and obviously it's a. How are you, I didn't ask the question, keeping construction vehicles on site?
The dragway.
It will be a holding, okay. So, we can, we'd like to, anybody object to that? Do the condition of, of all construction vehicles be parked on the applicant's property. The approval of the conservation department is required prior to issuance of building permit.
Gotcha.
In violation of terms of special permit is subject to the MGL Chapter forty-eight, Chapter seven. Chair makes a motion that we accept the documents, finding of facts, and conditions of approval stipulated. I have a second?
Second.
Check by Al. All those in favor?
Aye.
Affirmative? Okay, that's unanimous, just want to affirm that Chris voted in the affirmative. And right now, I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Al. I have a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Approved, unanimous, and unanimous of that, Chris indicated his approval. Voting on tonight's case would be Al Doniu, myself, Brian Sullivan, David Nunnely, Chris Murphy, and John Oast. Chair now entertain a motion to close discussion. I have a second?
Second.
By the way, I want to mention the fact that I forgot to open up the public comment, but there's so many in the public, and I realize I didn't check. Did you have anything you wanted to say?
No.
Okay. I apologize, I missed that. Now, Ken was here, he would have picked up on that, all right, but he wasn't here tonight. All right, it's like to vote on the motion to close discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion's approved. Unanimity, confirm that Chris voted in the affirmative. Chair will now entertain discussion, any further discussion by applicant of the board? Okay. And I'd like to hear a, a motion by the clerk.
Case number twenty-two-four dash thirty-seven, Charles and Jane Shaw through Chuck Hart, located at one-eleven Airport Road in Hyannis. They are the owners of the property located eighty-eight Neil Road, assesses map sixteen parcel A dash, A-one dash three in the RL zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from three-twenty-five fifty-four A, one, and two, alteration or extension of a single-family or two-family residential structure. Three-twenty-five attachment two, table two area regulation, three-twenty-five attachment three, table three bulk regulation to construct an attached deck and rent station on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw three-twenty-five fifty-four Mass. General Law forty-eight, Section six. The grant is consistent with the Diedrich, Grail and Diedrich and related cases as they will be in testification of one or more existing non-conformities, no new non-conformity and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and as proposed, structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereon true is hereby denied, and all work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions. During the life of the project, there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or landscaping between June thirtieth and Labor Day of any year. That the life, through the life of the project, of, the life of the project, approved project, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property, and no, not on any public street or road. The approval of the conservation department is required prior to the issuance of a building permit. A violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced, the violation of Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to general law, Chapter forty-eight, Section seven, the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
Can I have a second on the motion?
Second.
David? Any further discussion by the board?
It's that, it's that theme, is, can we confirm the parcel number again? Because it's one dash four on the.
I have parcel A-one dash three.
A-one dash three.
So, it's A-one dash four on the application. On the application, the zoning district says RL and AE.
A-one dash three.
A-one dash three, so it is correct.
Yeah, we got a lot of applications there.
Yeah.
And the same thing with the zoning district, because it lists two zoning districts on the application.
What is it listing?
RL and AE.
AE is the floodplain it's in. It is in the RL district.
Actually, look, we didn't say the lot was okay in the RL and AE zoning, it is, AE floodplain is a zoning district though, correct?
No, it's just a floodplain.
Okay, so it's not, okay. All right.
That's the applicants that filled these out, right? So, the typos by the applicant. No.
It's all right. I'll, I'll let Erin know, I'll let Erin know that that one up.
That mistake is going to cost you thirty days for proof.
That's, that'll, I think we'll still hit our deadline, we'll be all right.
Okay, so, we're left with a vote on the motion. And all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'd like to vote, is it unanimous? And Chris voted affirmative, you have your permit.
Thank you.
So, contact conservation.
She'll do. Early evening. Early evening, you guys have a great New Year and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
As well.
You too, thank you.
Okay. Folks, the resumations take too long, but I would like to take just a brief.
Five-minute break.
Make it quick. Okay, we'll do.
I hear, I hear you're not coming back for another stint.
I've had my fun.
It's too bad. You know, you have to find a replacement. Can't leave until you find a replacement.
Is that part of the stipulation, huh?
Yeah.
Is that where you're so here, Al?
Yeah, I just, I'm going to age out, I can tell you that right now, Dave.
So, and then I saw them, I was like, what they're talking about, I gotta go and find out.
Sure, I appreciate that.
So, and then, obviously, when you opened.
I don't know how long, I'll stick it out, I'll tell you.
This is my first meeting, so.
I, you know, I've been talking about this, you know, the problem is like.
Yeah, oh no, that's what we're trying.
It's the decision-making authority here, like, if you talk to people, like, oh, they'd love to be on the shellfish commission, or whatever, you know, the other stuff that doesn't really have to do with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a woman on this board, too.
We had it, we had it. Fortunately, my, my kids are at that age where there's basketball and sports every night, and I want to.
I love you, I don't know how you do it.
And I want to start coaching, too, so, you know.
My children were young, too, I did the same thing, I coached, and. There's not enough hours in a day.
Well, especially now, I mean, I, we were just having a discussion this morning about road running, it's. The sports leagues these days, they're turning the kids into these one-dimensional kids. They don't have time to play a different sport, they don't have time to have ju, summer jobs, they don't, it, it's, you know.
It's like everyone's, neither of my kids are going anywhere professionally in sports, I can tell that right.
Hardly any kids are, but it's like.
The system is geared.
Okay, Dad.
That's what they're like.
Because we were specifically talking about hockey, but it's like, all right, if you don't, you know, play, you know, the offseason league, if you don't go to the skills training, if you don't, you know, then next year, when you get back to the regular league, you're, you're not going to be playing, and most of these things are for-profit organizations, you know. And some of the, the leagues now are even stipulating that the kids can't play.
Yes.
On their high school team, if they play.
I had that situation, my children, my boys all played soccer, and I had kids on the team who were playing baseball at the school.
Yeah.
And, you know, there was a lot of pushback to, on the child, not on me.
Yeah.
But on the child, we got him, the, the baseball, he had, do it, not do it, to get off the team, or whatever the place it was, you know. And the other one was the, was hockey. Oh, God, these are traveling teams.
Oh, yeah, yeah, my kids, both my kids were in soccer, you know, winter indoor.
Yep.
Spring, you know, spring league.
Winter, summer, fall.
Yeah, and what, what started the discussion was, like, you know, I was talking with the selectmen in Dennis, and they can't hire, like, the summer jobs for kids, like, for high school kids, they, they had no lifeguards in Dennis this past year, because they had eighteen positions, they got three applications, one of the three was not qualified, and they, they finally made the decision, like, why not, why not have two lifeguards, trying to cover all the beaches?
That's not fair.
But, like, in the past years, that would have been, you know, seventeen, eighteen-year-old kids that went out, got their certifications, or, but it's, and everybody's kind of coming to this consensus, like, it's the sports, it's the sports that, because they need to go to a skills camp or do something else in the summertime, they're not going to make the team in the fall.
I would go tell, according to my perception, it's, it's, the sports is definitely leading, but it's also, you know, I can only speak to the Cape, but there's challenges of having, you know, the, the reducing, the reduction of children on the Cape, so there's, you know, so there's that variable in there, and the lack of ability to coach and whatnot. There's teams that haven't, like, that's why I want to coach, because I, my kids have not been able to play certain sports, because there wasn't a coach, so.
Good for you, yes.
The Cape is an interesting place to raise children.
Oh, I'm sure it is. You got everybody of my age, no.
Again, I know it's acceptable, you read that report.
Yes.
You know, it's basically, the average age in the last two sentences in the town is, is ten years older, twenty years.
Yeah.
So, it's basically, you know, you're not replacing, at, at best, you replaced half of the people, the younger people that passed away, but.
You're building more nursing homes.
Oh, yeah. It's good. Yeah, it's a, it's a challenge.
Coaching's a lot of fun.
You know, if you got a good group of children, it's terrific.
You can keep the mothers and fathers, I liked the ball soccer always, team was on this side of the field.
Yes.
The parents are on that side of the field.
Well, when we were, when my kids were, they were starting, I think called the quiet sideline. And actually, one time, I felt pretty good, but, you know, one, you know, half the people are idiots, you know, in the world.
I think it's more.
Below average. My son went and got his ref certification, and he would ref, like, he would spend his whole Saturday at the field, between his games and roughing, he'd be there at the field all day, and I was watching one time when he was roughing, and he was like sixteen, seventeen, so, I mean, a big kid, but not in a group. And some parents were ragging on him on one of these calls, and I was getting ready.
Yes, you were.
And one of the other parents, you know.
Ben hit on that one, said, hey, shut the hell up, this is one of the best kids we got, leave him alone.
And I'm like, okay, I can, I can do that.
My son did the same thing, he coached, he was a good guy.
Okay, we're back. All right, Chris, are you, are you on, off mute?
You guys are on mute.
How do you hear them?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yeah.
I couldn't hear a thing you guys were saying in that room, you guys muted me.
That's good, because we were talking about you.
Yeah, I really wanted to hear that.
That was enjoyable for you guys.
Okay. Let's start off with approval of minutes from November twenty-first. Anybody have any changes?
No.
I have no comments.
No.
David?
No comment.
All right. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
David?
Second.
Second by Al. Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
It's affirmed, five to nothing. Okay. New business, correspondence of potential cases not yet before the board. Oh, thank you. Last week, I believe, we received a letter from a resident that regarding Pine Oaks, and it was passed on to the board. I am, going forward, I prefer that, you know, any letter that comes in to the board, I mean, to the, for the board, has to be shared with, with the board members, that's, that's, that's the rule, except there is not a timeframe regarding that rule. And going forward, letters, opinions, for, against, whatever it might be, I've requested Rachel, and I want to, you know, I'll hear this, and if, and we'll discuss it, that going forward, these opinions do not get shared with the board until after we have an application before the board.
That's right.
Okay, so I don't want any more opinions being forwarded, and I'm sure. being forwarded, and I'm sure there are going to be more letters, because I feel the fact that we should not be seeing correspondence.
I don't think we can do it, I think we have to have
Right.
the forty B before us, we could look at anything.
So, I, I just don't want anyone, you know, any, any, any more opinions being forwarded to board members, you know, prior to it. Myself, I've avoided, all the, most of public, I've avoided the public hearings, you know, regarding, that potential case. And, uh, and I just think we all, you know, need to, you know, not consider or listen to or read the best we can opinions outside of till there has been an application before the board. Alright, does anyone disagree with that?
Not at all.
No.
Okay, so that's what that item is, alright? And that'd be case for any case going forward, but this particular one is generating, you know, information. The other, uh, let's see, so is there any, I don't believe, there's no, anybody additional new business?
I have a new business question.
Okay.
Just to clarify, it's probably more to Rachel, is, I noticed that Jack Mee is signing the letters, again.
Yeah, he's on part-time, once or twice a week to...
So he's taking over for Tom Wingard?
They're tag teaming it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it seemed like somewhere in the middle of October, all of a sudden it's Jack signing
Yeah.
the letters, okay, so we have more coverage now.
Two-part-time building.
Two-part-time building.
Yep.
Temporary building commission.
Yeah.
The, um, and I actually, I want a new business item to weigh, but, uh, I think, uh, last, uh, last week I met with a selectman, we got given a report. I don't know if anyone dialed in to that at all.
I was at C.
Okay, alright, it's, uh, the, uh, but during that meeting, I did, uh, in that presentation, I did discuss the fact that the one, the, uh, you know, the board needing new applicants, and new alternates to join the board. And that I clarified with the select board, as well as the, the two selecting that are on the interview committee, that we, anyone that is interested in applying, in, you know, interested in, in serving as a, a member, alternate member on the Board of Appeals, it does not require previous experience. It requires people that, that are intelligent and can set aside their own opinions to follow the rules. And regarding training... I got on the board, I don't know about the intelligence thing. Okay, well, it's... Well, we had a little bar there, but... But, but, no, no one's questioning that. And, and look at your chairs, right, anyways. The, um, and I emphasize the fact that in learning the code, you just need to learn it one case at a time. Now, subsequent to that, to that, there were people listening in the public, and I had been contacted by someone who was interested in, in joining the board as an alternate. And people would be meeting with this individual, if she wanted, this person wanted to meet with her, oh, it's a female, excuse me, who wanted to meet with me for a rest, and we just discussed the board and everything else. And then after that, and, you know, just, just trying to get a, and felt wanting to give them a better handle on how things operate. She has, she has looked at some of our meetings. And, um, subsequent to that, will contact the, the selectman's office and request an interview. Okay? So it, something came out of that, that meeting. Also, um, during that meeting, I, it did, uh, passed on what the board has indicated to me personally and so forth, is, uh, how pleased they are with Rachel services, as far as, as being a secretary, and I made note of that. And regarding, you know, particularly with, uh, not having a full-time commissioner, I know that her hands are, her plate's pretty full all the time. I want to thank you, have good work. So that, um, covers that. The, uh, old business. Discussion regarding the subsidized housing inventory plan, which I discussed briefly in, in the beginning, but we all have a coffee plan. Are there any questions regarding this? Actually, it's not a plan, it's just a report.
Yeah.
Subsidized inventory report. I mean, just, just so we know what it was, a question was raised, and, um, it just shows a, I think, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. There's approximately twenty-four, maybe twenty-five items, which have a, a total of three-hundred-and-twenty-eight, um, subsidized housing units in the town of, town of Howard. Any questions in that report?
Nope.
Okay.
Well, thank you for making that out, having that report made.
Well, actually...
No, I know John asked for it.
John, John asked for it, yeah.
Yeah, no, I spoke with Christine, I appreciate, you know, their help, uh, providing the information, and, uh, apparently this is publicly available on the state website, that she...
That's right, it is on the state website.
Yeah.
Okay, so, anyone who's interested in this report, prior to our meetings coming, uh, minutes of our meeting coming out in, uh, late January, it is available, uh, you know, on a, on a state, now state website.
Well, I think this is exactly kind of what I'd hope for, is, understanding what the baseline was before we start discussing any new, you know, applicants.
Excellent. Okay. Any additional correspondence or briefings, I don't think there's anything? Okay. Chris, do you have anything you want to? Everything worked out fine tonight, being remote?
Uh, yeah, it worked out pretty good. I can hear, for the most part, I heard no problem, a few things, but that was, that was minor. During the break there, I do have a question. There was a picture of a, uh, looks like the old town, you know, from back a hundred years ago. How was that put up? Can you see it behind anybody?
That's our, that's our break slide, so to speak. So, and when it goes to break, because it's not, it's a public meeting, so you're in the, in the, uh, go-to meeting, but you could, could come in and see the meeting, too, so we had to put it to the, the break slide, so to speak, so it's like, just doesn't show anything. Just, so everything's, it's like, just the break.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's what happened.
Just for future reference, if we are remote, it, it does go up and, uh, and everything is muted, so any background discussion is not picked up by the person that's, uh, remote.
I think that you'd have to, actually, when we go on a break, aren't these mics still live?
I usually cut, cut the mics out on the break.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
That's what happened.
People in Yarmouth would appreciate that.
That is true.
Yes, indeed.
It's, uh, Chris, being remote tonight, do you have any other suggestions regarding how it went? And would you prefer to see a different, uh, you know, station slide come up?
No, everything's fine. Uh, it was easy to get in, no problem, I just did it off, uh, I did it on a laptop, not on a, uh, on a tablet, so I just used it out of the browser, it was, uh, seamless. Just got to put in the, uh, email and, uh, password, and it popped right up. Just the only thing ahead of time, I wanted to make sure that, uh, the mic and the, uh, the audio was all working, I had to make a few adjustments, so that was helpful.
Alright, for, um, those who are in attendance here tonight, as well, as, uh, the audience are looking, perhaps viewing, what we're doing is that, because our board, uh, is missing members. It, uh, we normally have a five-member board and five, up to five alternate members. The, uh, and we're down to, um, just two alternate members, and, and potentially by June of this year, um, only have a total of six members. There is a, uh, requirement that if a case gets, uh, gets up, uh, lasts more than one meeting, that, um, a member can only miss, if it's going to be a case that's going to have multiple meetings, a, a member can only miss one meeting, insofar as not being attendance, and can make it up by going over the recordings in the minutes of the meeting. But after that, uh, they no longer are able to vote or participate in the meeting. That being the case, and because we may be looking at, at cases or, or, uh, this, this year, or future years, where it's going to last substantially more than, than one meeting, it's important that our, our members who might have to be on vacation, or can't come in that night physically to the building, can still log in and be part of the meeting. As long as there's a quorum of three on the Board of Appeals, including the chair, a, a member can, is allowed to participate remotely. So what we've done, decided last month, and we did, uh, again this month, and I'll have every member, uh, take the opportunity to, uh, learn, uh, and experience being remote. We're doing that, so, in the future, we don't lack the members who are eligible to vote when hearing a case. Okay, so that's why we're doing it remote. Uh, we, there are no intentions of making remote available to the general public, because of so many people and so forth, and sound, at this time, we feel it's best that, that if you need to speak at a meeting, to be in attendance. Okay? And, uh, you know, and again, the main reason why we're doing it is to facilitate, in the future, that we have ample members that are, are available to vote. So, that being said, I, I can entertain, anybody have anything further? Alright, that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. I have a crest, a request of, uh, Chris, if it's possible.
Okay.
Uh, in the future, is there any chance you could have a little more detail behind you, possibly a couple of plants, or a little bookcase? Just to add something to the background?
No. Not possible.
A library, a book, a picture?
Well, then I'd like to show you my, I have my printer, would that be okay? Yeah, my printer's in there now, if that works out.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
We're good.
We will adjourn as tomorrow, eight-thirty-two.
Have a good holiday, everybody, holiday.
Merry Christmas, happy...
Happy holidays, guys.
See you, guys.